The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens here, along with my guest co-host Dan Rylandz. And we're very pleased to be joined this evening on this edition with two guests who are both running for the Oshkosh Area School District's Board of Education. To my left is Dan Becker. Dan has served one term on the school board and was voted out by just, what was it? It turned out to be, what, 11 votes last year?
Correct.
And so he's giving it another try. Karen Bowen is also joining us this evening, and she is seeking reelection. She's currently one of our incumbents. And how many terms have you served, Karen?
Finishing my third.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, congratulations to both of you for making it through the primary a few weeks back, and we appreciate your being here. We were actually supposed to tape this show a week ago, but we had quite a snowstorm, and so we appreciate your being able to rearrange your schedules to be here. So now the hard work begins. So what are you going to do between now and April 3rd?
Well, my intentions are to be as visible as possible in the community. Make myself available at high school basketball games, although those are winding down at this point, and various community functions. Get some input from the public. The district is facing some serious issues, as I'm sure you're well aware, Cheryl, over the next few years. And I've always been a firm believer in public input on issues.
Okay. Karen, what are you going to be doing?
Pretty much the same thing, although my focus will be a little different. There are going to be, and there are going to be, as I understand it, a lot more opportunities for group discussions coming up.
On the new plan you're talking about?
Well, not just on the new plan, but just in general. Progress Oshkosh is doing something. The students are doing, the North and West students are doing something for the paper. There's a forum, at least one forum, probably two every week between now and the elections.
You guys will be busy.
Indeed.
Yes, indeed.
That's good.
All right, well, we appreciate you being here. Dan, you had sort of alluded to it, and I see you have the map there. Obviously, I think by now, most people who are watching probably are aware of the fact that a new scenario for redistricting and school closures and what have you was released earlier this week as we're taping this on March 8th. In a nutshell, the latest plan shifts the distribution of elementary and middle school grade levels. It makes K-2 three elementary schools, and then it changes the makeup of middle schools to fourth through eighth graders instead of the current sixth through eighth. And the other big component in this is that during the 2007-2008 school year, the district would be coming to the taxpayers for a $45.6 million referendum. How do you feel about the plan overall, each of you, and what, if anything, needs to be changed? And by the way, you can interact with each other.
Thank you.
This is going to be a little bit different than the candidate's forums, so just don't draw blood, and no weapons. So let's start with you, Dan. How do you feel about the plan?
I do have my concerns about the plan. There are some aspects of it that I believe are, quite frankly, unpalatable by certain members of the community or certain segments of the community. When you look at the map, and I don't know how many of your viewers have seen it as yet, but there are some areas within the school district that children are going to be forced to travel great distances to find their way to elementary school. When we're talking about the youngest of our student population, the kindergarteners, the first graders, second graders, as you said, Cheryl, up to the third graders, that concerns me, especially in the wintertime when it's dark in the early morning. It's a long haul. The district has, my understanding, begun to look at some busing alternatives, but that too comes with an expense. So I'm not so sure that this plan is going to be fiscally responsible in terms of its effects. The whole referendum issue, I believe, quite frankly, is a plan that's destined to fail only because this community has made itself very clear in the recent past regarding referendums, AKA the garbage fee. I think this district is going to have a hard time selling a $45-plus million referendum.
Okay, Karen?
I have mixed emotions about parts of it. I do agree that, I think, a referendum will be difficult to pass. However, just because it's difficult, I don't think we shouldn't give up. I think we face such dire issues in this district that if we don't do something, doing nothing's not an option. It's just not an option. It's just a matter of continually chipping away at what we've got, and if we continue to chip away at what we've got, we'll never be able to go beyond where we are, and we will backslide. I think the grade configuration is intriguing. There are a couple of things I like about it. One is that I think that the K-3 schools have a real opportunity to work with just those younger kids. I know some people are concerned about then that transition at four to eight. I don't necessarily have that same concern. What we learned from most of the research that we've been able to find, that administration has been able to find, is that what really matters with kids is what goes on in the classroom. And we have excellent teachers and staff in our district who can really help those kids make those transitions. I think we've got, since we've got to do something, we have, and I've said this many times, the district is kind of in the shape that it's in, and I mean that both geographically and literally, buildings are in the shape they're in because of some things that happened in the past, way in the past, when the district really was a kind of an arm of the city council. There was no school board. There was a board of control that was an arm of the school, of the city, a common council. And it really didn't, I think when I look back, when I look around, I think I see that the common council at the time had other issues. They weren't as concerned about schools as they might have been. And in order for us to fix what is wrong now, we would have had to go back maybe 40 years, 30 years. Well, that's not possible. So we've got what we've got. And in terms of some of these distances between schools, we've really got issues. Some of them are really close to each other, some of them are far, far away. We really do need to look at those issues. And I do agree with Mr. Becker that there is, I do have a concern about the youngest children walking. But I do believe that we have solved some of those problems in terms of what we've done now with Roosevelt, or excuse me, with Reed and Sunset in terms of the busing, the busing concerns that the parents had. We've been able to solve those, and the bus company has been really good about working with us. Both the city bus and cabus. So I think there will be some things coming forward that will make this easier. So I probably should stop. I could go on, but I won't.
It's only a half hour.
Yeah, right.
Well, Dan, you know, you've said that the referendum is destined to fail. How would both, well, what are your thoughts on what the district should do then? And then, I guess, to both of you, what will the district do if the referendum indeed does fail?
Well, I would like the district to put, if you will, the cart before the horse on the referendum. And by that, I mean, let's plan. Let's plan for that contingency. Because if we don't, we're forced with two options: to either go back and ask again, which I think is somewhat irresponsible, just to continue to ask until you get the answer that you're looking for. In my book, no means no. But secondly, I think it's in the best interest of the children to have that contingency plan, because we can't sit back and react rashly, react quickly, more quickly than we should, just to get something out on the street, because we're under some sort of self-imposed timeline. So I would like us to take a step back, I've used that phrase in the past, and think the process through for that contingency.
How would you recommend the district go about making the case for a referendum?
Well, certainly anytime you're trying to sell anything, it's about features, benefits, benefits versus opportunity cost, that type of thing. So certainly there are some educational values to this scenario. I think it does make, in certain aspects or certain spots, better use of our facilities. But at the same time, again, there's an opportunity cost, especially when it comes to the elementary students.
Okay, Karen?
I disagree with Mr. Becker in terms of going back and asking again. I think that's one of the things that you do, and we've seen districts do that. While in general, certain aspects of life, no means no, there's no doubt about that. But in this particular situation, when the voters say no, we need to try again to see what voters need. And a lot of work would go into referendum planning, where we could try that, to try to get what we can in advance, obviously. And so I would say we would go back. I would say that we would need to. In terms of a contingency plan, I'm not so sure that's a really good idea. First of all, we'd be looking at coming up with another scenario, and we've already been through seven scenarios. And in a sense, you could even say that several of the earlier scenarios had kind of 1A and 2A kinds of things. So the plan, there is not going to be, the truth of the matter is, the bottom line, there's not going to be a plan that's going to make everybody happy. I keep hoping that there is. I think I said that the last time I was on. I keep hoping that there's something that will come down the pike that we can say, oh, wow, here it is, this is it. But that's not going to happen. Anytime you plan for change, it's difficult for people. It's not so much that they're afraid of change, it's that they're afraid of losing what they already have and what they're used to. And so what we have to do is show people how the district will benefit from what we plan to do, whatever plan we decide on, whatever, how people will benefit, what the benefits are to the district, to their children, to them individually as families, and to the district as a whole.
Okay.
And there we go.
It seems to me the credibility of the process will drive a yes or no vote on the referendum. And to be honest with you, the last time you were here, the 9, 10, 11, 12 high school split was on the table. Now it's gone. Now this new one has appeared late. If we'd have gone back before the high school one, the South Park thing was off the table. Now it's on the table. I think a lot of people are confused that this process is never-ending in terms of alternatives. And you were both asked last night about, you know, should the board be voting on this before you were seated? And I think I got different answers from the both of you. Maybe you could respond to that. Is the credibility of the process an issue for you people? And two is, should this be voted on before the new board members are seated?
Go ahead.
I feel that, I've always, I've said this particularly since the issue that came before us that brought Mr. Becker to the board, as a matter of fact, the discussion of Webster-Stanley moving, becoming an all elementary school, and the middle school kids moving. If we can't talk about options, what can we do? First of all, we can't go back to the old smoke-filled rooms. We can't do that. And that's one piece of this discussion. If we don't lay all the options out on the table, how will people know what the options are? How will people know what they should be responding to? The second part of that is, if we just come up with one plan and stick to it, that doesn't make any sense. And I guess the third thing that I think is even more important is, even when we, the dreaded South Park decision, that was a draft. It said draft on it. It was stamped draft at the January 10th board meeting. They talked about it as a draft. Now, they didn't say every other word, draft, 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 but it was a draft. All of these are draft plans. And if we can't discuss them, I guess I don't know what living in a democracy is for, if we can't discuss plans. So, and on your second question, just quickly, in my mind, there, I really don't, to be honest with you, I think I may have said last night that, yes, we should vote on it. What I probably mean by that is, we can vote on it. We need to give the public some time to talk about it. There's no question about that. If we vote on it after the new board is seated, that would be fine with me as well. However, we should do it quickly. We don't want to drag this process out forever. We've been, really, we've had it.
I think your comment last night was, do it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We don't want to do this for another 10 years.
Yeah.
Dan? I would agree with Mrs. Bowen on certain aspects. I think we need to be expeditious in our vote, but at the same time, we need to make sure the public's gotten their opportunity to comment on the issue. And quite frankly, only the public can tell us when they've had that opportunity. I would hope that this could be wrapped up, pass or fail, by the end of April. I think that's probably a sufficient amount of time. What I don't think, though, is that the end of March is a sufficient amount of time.
I spent most of Tuesday talking to teachers and staff and stuff. They knew nothing about this plan. And quite frankly, they had a lot of questions about it.
Sure, sure, they should.
I said, what do you think? Well, I don't know. I've never thought of this before. How many schools do you know of, or school districts in this area have this sort of arrangement? Do you know of any?
Laconia, Brandon-Rosendale area.
Is that still the case? I was told that they've gone away from that model.
I don't know. Could be. According to Phil Eichstad, about 7% of the schools in the United States have this configuration. It's not a lot.
I can honestly say I've never heard of this arrangement before, but I don't know a lot, so.
Well, I actually went to one.
Really?
I did. Mm-hmm. I did.
One more, do you sense that this is a facilities-drawn plan, and they're trying to fit the educational component into it more? That this is really, you know, this is an architectural plan. This isn't an education plan.
I disagree with you on that one.
Really?
I do, I do. In fact, there are some components here that we are looking at. One is, and one that's become very important to me, because I see a possibility of an opportunity to do something about it. One is that we can take our, have our special ed programs, instead of busing these kids all over the district, as you know, we do. This way, with this particular, with a plan where we close this many buildings, and this plan in particular, we can have most of the education, the special education programs, one on each side of the city, so that kids at least are in there.
Where they should be.
Where they should be. Yeah, that's become more and more important to me.
You're tittering on the violation of...
Probably. You don't, being married to who you're married to, you know more about that than I do, yeah.
Leasing, you know, well, anyway. But it's, you know, they should be...
Yeah, that's something that's really, and it should be very important to it, and it is important.
That's a good point.
So that's one thing.
What do you think, Dan?
Our buildings are one of our biggest, if not our biggest, tangible asset. We need to make sure that we utilize them efficiently and effectively. So, yes, I do see some aspects where we're fitting the plan into the buildings, but at the same time, I think administration has done a pretty decent job keeping an eye out for the best interest of the kids.
It's hard to separate them, actually.
It is.
It really is. That's absolutely correct, yeah.
Well, Dan, would you be supportive of any kind of a referendum in any situation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I do believe there's some buildings within this district that do need some improvements made to them, some upgrades made to them. Smith comes to mind. There's some issues at Roosevelt. Nothing, though, that, in my opinion, would necessitate us abandoning a facility at this point. I think this community is proud of its neighborhood schools. I think neighborhood schools are better, especially for elementary students. You know, certainly as children age, the need for a neighborhood school somewhat wanes. But at the elementary level, I think a neighborhood school is important. And I think this community is willing to pay to maintain its neighborhood schools. I've always been a supporter of neighborhood schools, and, you know, I would hope that we can continue to support them. We may not have a choice, though, at this point.
I'd really like to comment on that, if I could. I had, and I'd like to comment on it by quoting a friend who shall remain nameless, who is a widely respected retired teacher in the district. She taught at a small school, went, one of the schools that we would be closing, and she went to one of the PMP presentations, as she put it to me last night, "with her heart on her sleeve," because she knew that her school was one of the ones that was going to be proposed to be closed. And she came, she said, so she went in there, ready to fight. She came out, she said, "I'm a believer. I'm a believer now of the larger school." Having heard the evidence that they presented and talking about education for the 21st century, about having more than one or even two sections, two or even one section, I should say, because some of our schools don't even have one section at each grade in elementary schools, and how important that is for planning, how important that is for teachers to collaborate, how much easier it is for teachers to collaborate if there's more than one or two of them in a building. So, and I, like Mr. Becker, I have always stood for neighborhood schools. I think with the 21st century upon us, we do need to change. I don't think it works the way it used to.
Okay. Well, let's talk about four-year-old kindergarten for just a minute. This was one of the things that came up at the League of Women Voters Forum last night. And Karen, you're in favor of the four-year-old kindergarten program. And unfortunately, we can't, even though it's in the governor's budget, we can't be assured that there's really going to be any funding for it. Is such a program, I know you're a proponent of it, like I said, but is such a program really necessary? I mean, aren't we pushing kids into classrooms just a little bit too early, especially since five-year-old kindergarten isn't actually required under the law?
Well, five-year-old kindergarten isn't required under the law, but any school district with its salt would really be hard-pressed not to offer it. And of course, five-year-old kindergarten is now all day in almost every district in the state. So four-year-old kindergarten then becomes, in a sense, what five-year-old kindergarten used to be. What I see five-year-old, four-year-old kindergarten doing is leveling the playing field for kids, because so many kids go to daycare or nursery school, but not every parent can afford that. And nevertheless, we would, of course, offer it to everybody, because we are a public school. It really does make, I think it makes a difference. It looks to me, from what I have heard of the research, it looks as if it makes a huge difference in how kids function then when they get into five-year-old kindergarten. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, kids should be in the sandbox, but the world, again, is not, this is, again, the 21st century. It's not what it was. The sandboxes during the days are, a lot of them are unoccupied.
Just to interject here, four-year-old kindergarten, as I understand it, is two-and-a-half hours per day. It's not a whole day.
No, it's not a whole day. That's right.
We're talking two-and-a-half hours.
That's right.
And it's not in all schools in the Oshkosh area, school district.
No, it wouldn't be. And it may not even be in the school buildings.
That's right. They are a wraparound thing that might work with. So it's not taking five-year-old kindergarten and making it a full-day program. I just wanted to throw that in, because there is a difference.
Dan, you're not in favor of it?
No, I'm not. I think, as I said last night at the League of Women Voters Forum, and you said it as well, the funding for four-year-old kindergarten is in question at this point. I've had the opportunity to talk with Dean Crawford and Mike Ellis on the issue. And they've formed the opinion that it's not going to be in the budget when all is said and done. So then what do we do? We're looking at having to make more cuts, whether it be the four-year-old kindergarten program itself, or looking at other options to reconcile the budget. It's a little tough to dangle the care of the four-year-old kindergarten out there and yank it back a year later. I think that's certainly not in the best interest of the kids as well, to put it out there and take it back.
This is my interpretation of the voting results. Hopefully you disagree. You guys are running neck and neck. There's only 26 votes separating you two. Karen, you won 22 awards. You ran first in. Dan, you ran first in 11, and you tied in one. You guys are kind of the opposites. And the meeting last night at school district, you disagree on fees, you disagree on the March vote, although you qualified that, the impact of the referendum, we disagree. What are the voters telling the school? Do they want a split decision? Do they want someone who's going to be more fiscally, and I don't want to put you in it, but to challenge the administration more than perhaps, is that the way you read it? That they want a balanced ticket on the school board this time? Because the other two candidates are far behind you two. And we're talking a lot of votes. So how do you read this? You know, you're very pleasant tonight, but on issues, my guess is...
I was on my best behavior when I came in.
Yeah, that you disagree on a lot of things.
It's a small room.
Civilly, but you disagree. So how do you read that? Is that what you think? They want a split decision?
I couldn't tell you how to read it. I'm not good at reading votes.
Okay. Well, you got a lot more votes than the rest of them.
Quite frankly, I gave up making predictions after last April.
All right. Well, that's a good answer, I guess, because there's any way.
Couldn't tell you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. On the superintendent, you guys are interviewed on the Oshkosh Northwestern. And I guess my question is, how do you share the evaluation of your superintendent with your constituents? Now, I think, Karen, you said that only elected officials should be evaluated in public. Dan, you gave some evaluations. But, you know, if you're not going to share with your constituents, as elected officials, how the superintendent is doing, how are we going to ever know?
You know, because he's still employed. That's the job of the school board, is to hire the superintendent and set the superintendent...
So if you fire him, then we find out that he's not doing right, is what you're saying?
Well, I suppose you could put it that baldly, but in a sense, in a sense, I suppose the other way you could look at it is, his salary's public. His salary's public, and, you know, he's not getting any increases. That's a, I really don't see how an official can function when sitting board members take potshots at the superintendent in public.
But it can be a positive evaluation.
It probably is. It probably will be.
Yeah, Dan said he was doing a pretty good job, yeah.
He did.
He has, on certain issues, I certainly would challenge him.
And you know, this is a key issue on the common council races.
I understand that.
And Dick Walnick is not an elected official either, but the public really wants more accountability and more direction. So can't we, as school board members, can't you share some of, you know, what you're telling him to do or not to do?
We do. We do that all the time. We set goals for him. Goals are public.
Exactly. The goals are set out there.
Goals are public, and we do talk in public about whether or not those goals were met.
And I think the public's certainly free to evaluate them, evaluate him themselves based on those goals.
And sometimes, not every year, we do evaluate him every year, but sometimes in the evaluation, we do what is referred to, and many people know, this is the 360-degree evaluation, where we collect opinions from the public. So indeed, they are. I don't want to take the piece of paper out that we wrote up and gave to him, and I don't want to hand that to the public. I don't think that's right, and I don't think the common council should do it either.
Okay.
Just my view of human resources.
Okay. All right, we're quickly running out of time, but Dan, we've heard comments from both you and Mrs. Monti about being able to do 100% of the work, or 100% of the job. What do you mean by that when you say it?
Well, one of my opponents, Mrs. Steele, has some conflicts of interest when it comes to participating in the process.
Because her husband is a teacher?
As well as the fact that she works for CISA VI, which brings another set of conflicts of interest to her presence on the board. The taxpayers pay for a full-time board member. They shouldn't have to pay for a full-time board member if they're only getting 85%, 90%. Call it whatever you want.
Okay. But what are the conflicts that come up with her position with CISA?
She, the district contracts with CISA for services on a variety of fronts.
So that's one aspect of a contract that she can't vote on?
Well, I would argue the contract as a whole with CISA.
All right. Well, and we'll ask her about that when she's here, but I guess, you know, looking, you could look at it the other way. If you can't vote on an aspect of something, then it essentially, in essence, counts as a no vote, which means that someone else is going to have to vote yes in order to offset that. Since this is a budgetary-type thing, wouldn't that be a good thing in your eyes, since you've kind of been opposed to some of the budgets and so forth?
Interesting spin, Cheryl.
It's not a spin, it's reality.
I can't argue with your logic, but at the same time, doesn't the public deserve to have, to be fully represented?
Perhaps, but there's always an elected official who can't vote on something somewhere along the line.
The budget is the most important thing the school board does, and to not be able to cast that vote kind of flies in the...
She can't vote on the budget, though.
Only if the teacher's contract has been passed.
Okay, all right.
And, and all the way, along the way, she can vote on the parameters that we set for the budget. She can vote on the budget reconciliation. She can't, she just can't vote if the teacher's contract hasn't been settled.
Okay.
She can't vote.
All right. All right. Okay. Very quickly, Dan.
Host Crescent on Sunday listed the schools that publicly sit on their fire drills, and all the cities in the Fox River Valley are listed, and there's none from the Oshkosh School District.
I'm not, I find that very strange, because in the story that the Northwestern did, there was a lot of talk about how the fire drills were done, and I see them. I've seen them.
Yeah, I have too, but evidently they didn't file their reports or something.
Apparently not, because as most folks know, I live immediately adjacent to Webster Stanley, and I've heard them.
Oh, I've been over there too, but here are the Oshkosh schools that are filed a report.
All right. All right. Very good. Well, go to the polls on April 3rd and vote for as many as two candidates. Thanks very much to both of you for being here.
Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by two folks from the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Ran across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
So, does, all righty, and welcome back to the second half of Eye on Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens here, Dan Ryland, and I think we caught everybody off-guard.
These are the two candidates, right?
Yeah. In any event, we have no more candidates this evening. They'll be on future shows. So, we are very pleased to be joined by two representatives from the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. To my left is Executive Director Joanie Geiger, and the Education Director Cheryl Rosenthal is to her left. And we welcome both of you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it very much. Gives us a nice little respite from local politics for a change. But Cheryl, we did see you at a recent city council meeting.
Yes, you did.
So, you were receiving a proclamation of some kind from the city. What was that?
The proclamation was in regards to Spay Day USA, and that is a day that was started in 1995 by the Doris Day Foundation, and the importance of spaying and neutering pets. And I thought it was important to draw attention to that in our community, because pet overpopulation is something that is prevalent all across our nation. And I thought it would be a nice way to get out to the community, what their local humane society is doing to help prevent pet overpopulation, and to let people know what they can do to prevent pet overpopulation.
What kinds of things are you folks doing?
Well, the day, the week of Spay Day USA, we were doing stomp-out pet overpopulation. We were selling little paw prints at our shelter, and we're hoping that this is something that may take off, and we'll do it in the future. And so, that any funds that were collected for that particular program went to our SNIP program, which is Spay-Neuter In-House Program.
All we. And we're going to talk about some of those programs during the course of the next 30 minutes.
So, other than that, we didn't really, we kind of didn't get on the bandwagon soon enough with it this year, but we're hoping that maybe next year, we can invite a few businesses to sell the paw prints for us. The newspaper was kind enough to print a letter to the editor to draw attention to it in that way, and I actually got a couple of phone calls from some of the people in the community saying, "Can I buy a paw print?" So, it was very, very well-received.
Well, you guys have, over the years, for most people, I'm sure, wouldn't know, but I did serve on the Board of Directors for a few years, and I was very proud to have done that. And just in the time that I've been associated with you all, you have really gained in momentum as far as involvement with the business community. You know, the business community has really, very, I think, warmly embraced the shelter. Yes. And what do you attribute that to? Just longevity, getting the word out?
Yeah, I think it's a lot of those things, but I think that, you know, obviously, we've got a great cause. I mean, and the fact that, you know, we're out there and we're telling people about it, and, you know, it's interesting how people just gravitate towards animals. But the other thing, too, is that we do a lot of things for the community. I mean, there's a lot of programs that we do that are attached to people. We've got kid programs, obviously Cheryl being our education coordinator. I mean, we're doing programs all the time for that. We're doing things, we work with the Christine Anne Center, you know, so there's just lots of, lots of programs out there, and people just love animals. And so, yeah, we're happy that we're so well-received.
And I'm going to give Dan a chance to jump in here, too, but, you know, it really is about people, too. It's not just about helping animals. And that's one of the things that I learned when I worked with you folks. You know, talk about, and I don't care which one of you does it, or you can both do it, but talk a little bit about, you know, that connection between people and animals, and animal abuse, and child abuse, or, you know, domestic violence.
One of the things that I have found over the years is that every person that you come in contact with has a relationship with animals, whether you like them or not, because even not liking animals means you have a relationship with them. And so, that's a very big point, that everybody you meet, and especially when they're coming through the doors of the shelter, they're either having a problem with an animal, or they have an animal that they need to rehome, or they want to get an animal because they just lost one. The other part of the coin with people and animals is there's a correlation between animal abuse and human violence. And it's been proven that people who abuse animals at some time in their life will abuse a person. And it's something that needs to be recognized and not be taken lightly. And part of our education program, all of our education programs, I'm an old-fashioned girl. Joanie knew that when she hired me. I grew up with the golden rule, and so, we have the Astro Educational Golden Rule Programs, and they're based on treating each other as you would be treated, how you would like to be treated. And I take that one step further with the kids when I meet with them, that you're not just person-to-person, but how would you like to be treated if you were a pet, or an animal, or our environment? We take that extra step of, you know, who does the school belong to? And I get some really cute answers with that one. You know, it belongs to the principal, you know? But bottom line is, it belongs to all of us, and we need to care for it. And I think in looking at that, you can, people are starting to realize there is a connection between people and animals. And, you know, I love cats. You know that I love cats, but I certainly don't want my neighbor's cat using my garden as a sandbox. So, here again, there's, if people would stop to think about it, there's a lot of relationships that everyone has with animals.
Before any of our shows tonight, Cheryl said you were going to be on, and I was part of the main site in Grand Forks, North Dakota back in the '70s.
Good for you.
And all we had for a building was a closet, really small one. And so, my wife became the Catwoman of Grand Forks. We had all of the Humane Society cats in our basement, in our garage, for almost a year.
That is fabulous.
And then some retired professor left $2 million to the Humane Society, and they, my wife didn't have to be the Catwoman anymore, and so, they all moved to this really nice quarter. So, I know what you're doing, and I fully support it. I have a question about, the public seems to have a resistance to exercising of pets, the dogs in particular, like in the city parks. Do you have any, without, you have any view on that? Should that be something that should be offered to dog owners in the city of Oshkosh, that they could, with a leash, walk their dog in the park?
Well, I have some personal views on that myself. You have a lot of parks in this city, and there's a lot of parks, I think, that, you know, obviously, I think sometimes go unused. And wouldn't it be nice to have a couple of parks dedicated to that, just to that? You know? So, yeah, I think so, and I think that as long as people are, Cheryl talked about the golden rule, as long as you pick up after your animal, and you respect that, and you keep your animal on a leash, yeah, I think it would be a wonderful idea, and I'd like to see it go forward.
What do you think, Cheryl?
And I think it's one of those things where the responsibility has to fall on the pet owner. And unfortunately, like in so many instances, there's a few people that can ruin it for the rest of us. And so, it's like, okay, you want to take your dog to the park, you got to clean up after your dog. Your dog needs to be licensed. Your dog needs to be wearing a leash. I know that in state parks, it's required that your dog be on leash at all times, and your dog can't be on anything longer than an eight-foot leash. And we travel, and we've gone to different state parks, and we have the retractable leashes, and we actually had a ranger stop us, and as long as you, we had it marked on our leash where that eight-foot mark was, you know, that's fine. You can use that leash. And so, I think it's a matter of respecting, everybody has the right to use things, but again, treat it the way you would treat it if it belonged to you.
Kind of goes back to your question you said a minute ago, and like, who owns the schools? It's like, who owns the parks?
Yeah.
You know? And it's, you know, everybody should own.
And they should. And I tend to agree with that. You know, what a great opportunity for people to get out and enjoy their dogs, and enjoy the fresh air and exercise.
And exercise the dogs rather than, yeah.
And for us, too. Yeah, you bet.
Well, and of course, this is an issue that I'm sure you both are aware of, coming before the Parks Advisory Board. And then, in one form or another, we'll go on to the city council. We should have asked our candidates about that.
And we were, we have been very fortunate the last, I think it's the last three years, we have been permitted to use Menominee Park for our Shelter Trek, which takes place in September. And the participants of that event have just immensely enjoyed being able to take the trail through our beautiful Menominee Park and enjoy the morning.
I think people come just because it's in the park, because it's like, wow, this is cool.
Well, it is a beautiful park, you know?
It is.
For the most part, you've got the water there, and there is a nice trail. So, Shelter Trek is one of your events that you have coming up in like six months from now, five and a half months from now. What are some of the events that you have coming up, like in the real near future?
Well, actually, we're doing some different things this year. We're looking at some different types of events, and we're kind of, kind of getting back to our grassroots as far as some of our volunteers are working with programs such as, we've got some rummage sales that we're going to be doing, and we're going to, we're thinking about possibly doing a little casino night, and some oddball things like that. So, we're pretty excited about, you know, but a lot of those things are in the planning stages right now.
Something else that we're going to be a part of that I'm kind of excited about is the half marathon that's going to be taking place here in Oshkosh. And the benefits of this will go to the Christine Anne Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. And this is really, I didn't think I'd get excited about it, because I thought, well, I'm certainly not a marathon runner. But when I went to the first meeting regarding this, it was pretty exciting as far as all that goes into planning this event, and what it's going to bring to Oshkosh, and for us to be a part of it. So, right now, I'm serving on a committee regarding that, and am in the process of searching for volunteers to work at, our responsibility is to be at the finish line. And Joanie doesn't know this yet, but I thought it would be apropos, I volunteered to be a mouse at the finish line.
Maybe you should have two mice.
Well, they have another mouse costume, if you'd like to volunteer.
I've done, I've done a lot of costumes.
We also have a dog costume.
When and where is it?
It is April 14th, and it will start down by the sundial, and the finish line will be at the Leech Amphitheater.
If I told you two ladies I'm going to be in Sweden on April 14th, would you believe me?
Yes, I would.
Oh, are you? I've watched the show before, Dan. No, I wouldn't.
Thanks.
Well, all right, so you need someone to be another mouse.
I need another mouse.
Another mouse.
I need a mouse.
All right.
I'll see if I can find you a mouse.
And of course, as with any volunteer opportunity, you can call the shelter, or you can visit their website, oahs.org, and we'll be putting that up on the screen throughout the rest of the half hour as well. And Shelter Trek, what is the date for that this year?
September 8.
September 8th. Okay. All right. See, now, Dan will be here for that.
All right.
Call me. I'll call you.
All right. Let's talk about some of the programs that the shelter offers. One is the, it's called My Best Friend. What's this program all about?
My Best Friend, obviously, for dogs. And, you know, we put a lot of medical costs into the dogs that come through. We've gotten very sophisticated, especially since we've moved into the new building, and obviously, we do a lot of things like spaying and neutering, we do heartworm testing, distemper vaccination, worming. And so, there's a lot of money put into that, just on that alone. And the truth of the matter is, it's one of the things that we try to do, is to keep that adoption cost down. And for $100, you can adopt a dog that is fairly ready-made at the shelter. But the, again, the truth is, is that we very often put more than that into the dog. So, we're asking, our Best Friend program is basically where someone can donate, and it's, you know, for $500, and you would be a best friend for a year, and your name goes on a plaque, and it helps to subsidize those costs, because obviously, we try to recover them someplace.
Sure.
Yeah. We just interviewed city council candidates, so I'm still thinking city. Are the ordinances that deal with pets in the city adequate? I mean...
They're better than most.
Better than most.
Yeah, actually, we've been very fortunate, because as far as the animal ordinances, I think, I think we're a little tougher on, state statutes are pretty bland as far as when it comes to animals. The city statutes are actually a little bit tougher in regarding, you know, housing, animal cruelty, all those types of things. So, we're more fortunate than some of the other communities.
In an ideal world, is there anything that could be changed that would improve for this?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, gosh.
Like what?
Oh, one of the first things that I'd like to see done is, obviously, you know, mandatory spay and neuter.
Okay.
This, you know, it's kind of outrageous as far as just the sheer volume of pets. There's a lot of people that are currently breeding in the city of Oshkosh that are obviously selling those puppies, and they're not paying any tax, and they're, you know, this is a nice way for them to make a second income, but, you know, it's really not right.
So, no city ordinances cover those issues?
Not really. They don't really address them in the sense that, you know, you know, a breeding license versus a kennel license and those types of things. So, that's one place I would start for sure, you know?
So, mandatory spaying and neutering, that kind of leads us to our next program, SNIP. You kind of initiated that.
That was very clever, Cheryl.
I've worked in media a long time. Segways are a good thing, you know? It's one of my specialties.
Well, and we're hoping that the name will help people understand that our spay-neuter program, it's a program to support spaying and neutering animals that are in the shelter, you know, animals that are currently there, that this isn't something that's going to, you know, take away from the veterinarians in the city. You know, these are to make sure that we are not, as a humane society, adding to the pet overpopulation problem. And I think it's really important, because our SNIP program is made possible by the donation of time and skills of several local veterinarians. And so, they're already, you know, making a huge contribution to this program. And I think this would be a good place for me to say, last year, that number will forever be ingrained in my head, last year, we spayed and neutered in-house 527 animals. And I think that's pretty impressive.
A lot of SNIPS?
Yeah, a lot of SNIPS.
The Home at Last program. What's that all about?
Home at Last, that is a really cool program. One of the things, and it kind of goes in conjunction with the sheer volume of animals that are out there. Obviously, cats breed faster. And I'm not, you know, truthfully, I think that people have a different value system for dogs as compared to cats. Sometimes I think that people think that cats can live outside without issues or problems, and the fact is, they breed much faster than dogs. There's more of them. 52,000 cats or kittens born every day in the USA. 52,000. That's a lot of cats. So, the truth of the matter is, especially when kitten season comes, there's just so many at the shelter. And the older cats get overlooked. So, the Home at Last program allows us to just say, you know, if this is a cat three or older, we're going to waive the fee entirely. So, in other words, there will be no adoption fee for that cat because that may encourage a person to actually look at an older cat. Because it's very, very difficult for them to compete with the kittens.
Sure.
And so, the older guys that come in, or the older gals that come in, actually, and again, medically, we're putting a lot of effort and energy into these animals. And so, just because they're older doesn't mean that they don't have value and that they won't be a great companion. Older pets, obviously, are very good companions. We just had a kitten, we had a meeting this morning in an education room, and we had a young cat in there, and that thing was zooming through the room like it was crazy. And I'm like, I don't want this one at home. So, I prefer an older animal because obviously, that's more my lifestyle. So, that Home at Last program allows us, again, to do that and give people an opportunity to come in and adopt those animals.
Okay. There's a lot of programs that we're probably not going to have time...
Oh, yeah.
Well, I know we were not going to have time to get to them. But the Cuddles Fund, that is one that I'm sure a lot of people who are fans of the animal shelter are aware of. But for viewers who aren't aware of it, explain what that is.
That's a really near and dear program to us. Cuddles was actually a dog that was thrown over the fence, severely beaten, and very severely injured medically. And it was just a shocking experience for us and obviously, for the dog. And so, it went, you know, media-wise, and people just responded. It was just a tremendous response. It was just amazing. I mean, it just made your heart feel good that people cared so much about this poor little animal. And so, the perpetrator was caught. But more importantly, what happened through this process is that we had gotten so many donations to help this, medically help this dog, that we were able to put that money aside and designate it to the Cuddles Fund. And so, it is money specifically designated to what we call catastrophic problems, medical problems for animals. And we're able to help these animals that normally, we wouldn't have the funding to do so. So, pretty exciting.
What's the biggest myth that people have about the Humane Society?
We have money. We have a beautiful building. I don't know, Dan, if you've got a chance to see it. It's beautiful.
I doctorate over in that area, so I know it.
So, it's a lovely building. And, you know, it's interesting to me because people come in and they're pretty impressed. And they're, I think there's just an assumption that, wow, you know, you guys are set.
There's a liability for being successful.
And the truth is, is that we really, you know, it's a $600,000 budget. And we only get $70,000 a year from the city for our contract, for picking up stray animals. And so, the rest of that money has to be raised, you know, through generous donations, the public membership. And being a nonprofit is, you know, kind of a challenge.
Well, and a few years back, in fact, when I was on the board, you had received a million dollars that had been bequeathed, if you will, to the shelter. And I think that people probably think that you have that money just sitting in the bank, and you can draw from it anytime you want.
Right.
That's not the case.
No, it was an endowment. And what that means is that money will always be at the Oshkosh Foundation. And we can receive the interest.
The interest. We receive the interest, right.
And I don't know if anybody else out there knows what the interest rates are these days, but, you know, they're not all that wonderful. And a million dollars, you know, years ago, a million dollars, that was a lot of money. And, I'm sorry, a million is not a lot of money.
We're obviously very, very grateful for the gift. And it allowed us to start the capital campaign. But again, we did not receive the $1.2 million. That is an endowment, and we're receiving the interest. And so, I think there's been a misconception about that out there.
And I think, you mentioned that, you know, your wife volunteered, and they had a very small-type shelter.
It was a shack.
A Quonset, you said. And the building that we were operating out of was less than 2,600 square feet. And anybody who visited that building would realize that it was not conducive to conducting business. It wasn't very welcoming. And so, I think when we pursued moving into a new location, we really stepped out there, it was a leap of faith, that the community felt that the programs and the services that we provide are worthwhile enough that they would stand behind us and support that. And now, I think the facility that reflects Oshkosh is one that says, welcome. Come and see our animals. Come and participate in our programs. Come and volunteer with us. Use us as the valuable resource center that we are. There are so many things that our local humane society has to offer to the community. Just an invaluable resource that I don't think the majority of people in our community are taking advantage of. You want to know what dog classes are going on in the city of Oshkosh? Give us a call. Are you new to the area, and you're not sure what veterinarian to visit? We have a full list of all, every veterinarian here in the Oshkosh area. Are you having a problem with your dog barking? Do you have a litter box issue with your cat? Oh, you need some behavioral training. We can refer you to a trainer. If we can't help you right there and then, we're going to find you somebody that can help you. And at the same time, you're going to feel comfortable coming in. It's, we have a lot of competition out there. Look in the want ads, or in the Pets for Sale ads, rather. You know, we're fortunate the pet stores aren't selling cats and dogs, but our competition is heavy. And I think people need to kind of reevaluate and look at what are we offering to the community as a whole? And many of the services that we're offering are free.
Well, you actually even, I don't know if you still do this, but I know at one time, you actually had a list of landlords that were...
We still do.
Do you?
We still provide that.
That are pet-friendly.
So, yes, we still do.
And that will allow pets. And I think that's a wonderful thing because, you know, there are far too many landlords who don't allow pets.
You're right.
For whatever reason. And that's their prerogative. It's their property. But, you know, we are a pet-friendly world. Everybody seems to love pets, for the most part. And, you know, they're members of the family. They're not just property.
Right.
So, you need to have a place where you can have your pet. So, that's a good thing that you do. You have needs for money. You have needs for volunteers. You have all kinds of needs. Give us some of the needs that you have.
You kind of said it. You covered it, Cheryl.
That's all of them. That's...
You know, obviously, we have a wish list. You know, we keep a current wish list up all the time. So, people can call at any time, or they can stop down. We actually have it right on the counters there where if people are interested in giving us something or gifting something to us, that would be great. Obviously, monetary gift is wonderful. People want to give their time. We appreciate that. Our volunteer, since we've been in the new building, our volunteerism has increased over 100%. It's just wonderful. People come in, they walk dogs, they play with cats. I mean, it's just a great, great opportunity, so.
Okay. And, you know, and some of those items, too, include, you know, cleanser for the floors and dog food, cat food, toys.
Yep, Lysol floor cleaner, Purina cat chow and Purina, kitten chow, puppy chow.
Come kitten season, we're going to need the kitten chow. I mean, because we really, we get buried. I mean, they come in fast and furious. In kitten season, we average eight cats coming in a day.
And kitten season is when?
Kitten season will be starting very shortly, unfortunately. It'll be right around April. And then, it runs all the way through the end of October.
Okay. And we can always use bleach, paper towels?
Always use bleach, laundry. So, you know.
Okay.
Very good. We are out of time, ladies.
Did go fast.
Thank you very much for being here. I told you it would go fast. But we'll have you back again.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And to talk some more about some of the things that you're doing and some of your needs. But in the meantime, they are at 1925 Shelter Court, which is out by Doctor's Court, right off of Bowen Street. It's one block toward the railroad tracks. That's the easiest way to find it. You can call them at 424-2128, or visit them on the World Wide Web at oahs.org. Thanks to all of our guests. Dan, thank you. To our crew as well, thank you. And most of all, thanks to you at home for allowing us into your homes for the last hour. We will see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.